Well, call the meeting to order. We're gonna ask Councilman Kunk to lead us in the prayer and Councilman Castillo to lead us in the pledge.
Lord, you have trusted us as stewards of this city and parish of Lafayette. Please guide our hearts as we make decisions this afternoon. May we always be mindful of our service and seek you first in all that we do.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, members. We welcome you to today's budget review. This meeting is a departmental budget review session. If you wish to address the council, a green sheet should be filled out and given to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams seated to my left. I am requesting that the first row also to my left be used for media only and that the right side of the auditorium be reserved for the budget and finance staff. I am also requesting that anyone who approaches the podium please state their name and title for the official record. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium and all cell phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. This meeting is to address matters related only to the proposed budget document. Please, we request that all other matters specific to city parish government business be directed to the administration and that it not be addressed at this public forum. The budget document has been posted on the website at www.lafayette.la.gov under Finance. Public comments will be held immediately following each budget hearing on matters related to that specific departmental's budget. All council members are reminded that three possible actions could be taken during these hearings. A council member may propose changing the budget by offering one of the following. You could make an amendment to the budget and that's when the council goes without opposing that proposed amendment. It will go forward as a general amendment. If a member chooses to make an amendment and another member opposes it, that will become a separate amendment to be taken up later at adoption separately on its own. And lastly, a council member may choose to mark an item or request an item for wrap-up discussion to allow time to receive additional information. And I want to bring some clarity to that area. If you request something from the department, we've asked the department to send that information directly to the clerk, directly to you and the other members. And upon receipt, we ask that if it satisfies what you were looking for, that you make the clerk aware so that item can be removed and we have the cleanest document possible going forward. Let me also remind you that if an amendment is made and someone objects to that amendment, we move forward. This is not the time that we debate whether or not something should or should not happen. Every member here has the full authority to make amendments and every member has the full authority to object to it, but we don't debate them today. That'll come at final adoption time if in fact it remains out there as a separate amendment. We want to try to move along as best as we possibly can, okay? Again, you may also make an request for information from the director of the agency, the head or any of the following to receive and if you receive our review of information, you may choose to come back later to perform one of those three options. So if in fact you get something and it then moves you to want to make an amendment, we allow for that to take place as well. Let me announce that council members Jared Bellard, Kevin Nakken, Nanette Cook and William Terrio are unable to attend today's review. And just to be clear and let people know that budget hearings does not require a quorum as in a regular meeting of the council. So it is not necessary for us to have even five people here. We do realize that, you know, most council members are still working in professionals with the exception of the old guy. But we just, we respect the fact that they cannot make all meetings, but they get all documents and all requests that they have are met. We choose to have these meetings during the day. As you can see, we have a very large group of employees today. So the alternative is that we meet at night and all these people have to get overtime. So by doing it during the day, I had once, I believe, and we kind of got to this point that it is the responsibility of the council to make the sacrifice. We voluntarily offered ourselves up to be elected. We were successful. This is one of the things that happened. You have to take time off from work. So with that said, I'm gonna open the floor at this time. Any council members have any announcements that you would like to make? Okay. If there aren't any announcements, I want to give the mayor president, I don't know if there's anything you may have for us at this time. Anything happen from the last time we were together? I don't know if we caught any cats lately, but... But any announcements, Mr. President?
None, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move into the budget department review. We're gonna first go to Ms. Toops for the performance, some oversight of what's going on, then we'll bring up the departmental's director and we're gonna start our review. So with that said...
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Overall, in the LUS, the utility system fund budget, you'll see a slight increase in their operating budget of less than a half a percent. As we go through the operating lines, you'll see about a $10 million difference in operating expenses offset by a nine and a half million dollar decrease in expected fuel and power purchases. They have 464 employees in this budget and they're not adding any employees in this budget. Usually whenever we have a department that is funded from different sources, I give you a pie chart. But you don't have a pie chart today for the LUS fund because 100% of the revenues used to fund this department comes from user fees. It comes from fees for water, sewer and electricity. There are no tax revenues placed in this fund for operations of the utilities division. And that's it.
Seemed like your presentations have shortened it. Was that because y'all, all those awards y'all winning?
Well, maybe so. I was gonna sneak that in later. I got the perfect time for that coming up.
We're gonna hear about them again?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Mr. Huvall. And I know this, this department historically has quite a few speakers that come. Feel free to use the other mic. You don't have to simply just share a mic, so. Mr. Huvall?
Hey, thank you very much. And I've got a PowerPoint presentation to provide to you. I think last year was the longest one I've ever had and this one may be one of the shortest ones I've had. But it's ideas to kind of give you and the public kind of overall perspective as to where we are, some of the things that we are looking forward to in the next year and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty of the details. So from a high-level perspective, our rates, electric rates still remain amongst the lowest in the nation. That doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of things that we do to make that happen, especially with the, in the involvement we have with MISO to get fuel at a low cost and generation, electric generation at low cost. And we also have the most reliable service in the state, still do. And again, that, there's a lot of effort that takes place to make that happen. And then to help our customers better manage their bills, we have some mechanisms in place to be able to respond to customers to the system in that regard. Our personnel count, as mentioned earlier, has dropped compared to what it has been five years ago. So we're trying our best to keep our resources at the lowest level possible to get the work done. I mentioned about MISO, that's a mid-continent independent system operator, the entity that we buy all of our power from and then we also sell power to them. We've, the portfolio in MISO is about 14% renewable energy and that's gonna continue to increase as time goes on. And you can kind of see how our fuel costs have dropped over the last dozen years or so. Big reason for it being part of MISO, another reason being some of the changes that's taken place in the grid, generation capacitors available, et cetera. So we're taking full advantage of the lowest-cost power we have available, which means that your constituents are able to enjoy a lower utility bill as compared to what we've been able to do in the past. Again, focusing on utility rates over the last 12 months. So we're looking at the month ending in July, going back 12 months before then, so we have a good balance of everything that's taken place in the course of a year. Our average residential rate for 1,000 kilowatt-hours is $88.97. Entages is about 4% more than what we charge in CLECO. SLUMCO is about 10% more and CLECO is 34% more. So comparison to all the utilities in the state and especially the largest ones, we have, you know, very attractive price to our customers. When you look at the overall cost of providing service, electric, water and sewer, you can see where we're not quite the lowest, but the differentiator is sewer. We are fully compliant with our sewer system, you know, which means we have spent a lot of money that some of the others have not yet spent. And, but still have an attractive overall bill even in consideration of that, you know, water, we're lower than anybody else in the state. Electric, we're lower than anybody else in the state than sewer. We're not, we're not the highest, but we're higher than half of the others. And it's just, again, part of what it takes to provide a compliant, environmental-compliant sewer system. Reliability, when you look at the frequency of outages per customer, we have the fewest power outages in the state. Lot of reasons for that happening, very proactive efforts that we have to continue to focus on that. And you look at the other utility companies and you see that their number of power outages per customer is far, far greater than what we have in Lafayette. On the other measure of reliability is how long the power outages last. And a big part of our success in both of those areas has to do with our, our system to be able to monitor when outages occur so we can respond quickly as well as the way we operate our system. And you can see that our numbers continue to drop as, for having shorter outages as time goes on. Again, a major, major comparison in benefit of Lafayette compared to others in the state. How much is our electrical liability worth? There's an index that's put together by the Department of Energy that if you look at the second most reliable utility in the state, our customers saved $93 million in 2016 as a result of not having those outages. And we're really talking about commercial customers. When a residential customer's lights go out, it's not necessarily gonna cost them money, certainly inconvenient. But when businesses are shut down, that's what makes a big difference. And when you look at the state of Louisiana's average as a whole, that savings would be like 183 million. That's not money in anybody's pocket per se, but that's money that would leave the pockets of these business people in the event that we didn't have this kind of reliability. So how do we do it? Proactive engineering. So the projects that we have here before you are the things that we find are necessary to be able to keep us moving ahead and providing reliable service to our customers. Our aggressive use of technology, certainly our fiber system has been a major tool in helping us detect where we have power outages, respond to them very quickly, helping us operate our system more efficiently and how we use our various pieces of equipment on our system, capacitive banks to be able to manage the voltage and the power flow in our system. And also system maintenance. You know, we've had a lot of discussion recent times about tree trimming, you know, and, and there's no question that the tree trimming practices that we've had have been very helpful in helping us keep reliability high. At the same time, we have been sensitive to the concerns of the public and made some, some adjustments and some commitments to try to be as, as fair to their concerns as possible. Our customers continue to tell us that they're looking for reliable, low-cost service and customer service that's responsive to their needs. And all indications are is that those are the things that we're delivering on the table to our, to our customers. I'd like to share with you some of the projects that we've undertaken that are underway since our last hearing. Our Harkes Abair plant, which is the, the plant on the south side of Lafayette off of, near Commission Boulevard, is a 12-year-old unit. We had some, some areas where we needed to have some, we had some weakening structures in place. So now we've replaced those with stainless steel for safety and reliability, being proactive instead of having a problem occur first. We're replacing a lot of our breakers in our system. These are the, it's kind of like the breaker in your home, except it's a much, you know, bigger industrialized version of it. And those are the things that help to isolate the parts of our system that might have incurred an outage from cascading into outages elsewhere. So we're being proactive in that regard. Commission Boulevard, an area that serves the Holiday Gardens area, you know, we've had some complaints in recent times about the, the color of the water. The water is still very safe, but you know, when folks see a little yellow tint in it, they get concerned and we understand that. We're gonna have to put in some filtering because the water source in that area is a water source that's heavy in iron. And, and so we're gonna put some filters in place. It's in the budget. We have previously done that at our Gloria Switch Road area where we had that condition before and it has worked well. So this is going to be a very good project for us. It could probably take another year and a half or two years to get that completed. Building facilities along Ambassador Caffrey to serve the arterial and to provide for system reliability. We try to operate our system, our utility system in a loop-type fashion. So when part of, one part of it is out of service, then we can still keep services to others. And so that's part of that project. Replacing galvanized water lines, you, some of you in the, all the areas of town have had complaints about the fact we've had, you know, water lines that have failed. We've tried to repair them and, and then they fail again. So we're replacing, we included in our budget in the last several years, an acceleration of replacing these lines on a more proactive basis. And our north water plant, the oldest water plant that we have, is, we continue to do the work necessary to kind of keep it in good shape. Obviously, painting, trying to avoid corrosion are important aspects of that. Sewer point repairs, that's a kind of endless project. We've got to continue to, you know, these sewer lines, things settle over years. You have some corrosion that takes place, et cetera. So that's part of our budget and, and we're, we're gonna be continuing to do that going forward. South sewer plant, if you haven't been along, along West Bayou Parkway near college, we've got a lot of activity taking place there and more to come. That's the area where we have the biggest growth of sewer capacity in the, in the city. To build, to be able to take some of the flows that would typically go into the Ambassador Caffrey plant, bring those to that location because we have enough property there to build additional facilities. Therefore, Ambassador Caffrey plant be the location where the growth is going to take place. Naturally, it takes place. Smart City initiatives, we've talked in recent times and you all just approved a purchase for us to move with LED streetlights. We're gonna be moving with an initial downtown retrofit as a result of that action. And we have plans, the citywide deployment by 2020. Working with the police department especially as to what's important to them and trying to deal with crime. The purpose of these lights is going to be to provide maximum lighting at a lower cost. The way this is being funded is that the cheaper prices of putting in of power required by these lights will fund the project. Then we've got to work with the administration and public works to make that happen. So by 2020, we think they will have all the lights in the city replaced with LED lights. The Smart City Air Quality Partnership, that's with UL and CGI Fiber is gonna be a very important part of that. It's only been Lafayette and Baltimore has received this particular grant to move forward. So we're looking forward to, to continuing with that. One of the things in your budget and the Parks and Recreation budget is for, to have Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi available in all of the parks and recreation buildings. That's just kind of a first step as time goes on, want to be, make Wi-Fi available in a broad basis on public properties. But we've done this one step at a time and, and real excited about this. The first one we're going to do is at Gerard Park. And we actually have that project underway as the initial pilot program, kind of see how that works, learn, learn about the usages and so on associated with that and then expand beyond that point. Also, the police department has visited with us often about wanting to have additional police cameras to help them in their efforts to control and monitor, control crime in the city and to monitor the areas. And so we're gonna be taking the fiber connectivity that we're having in place to build a hookup to the cameras that they're gonna be installing. So pretty excited about that. On the LUS fiber side, I know we're talking, I'll just do it at one time, so only one slide, slide for fiber, even though we're talking about the LUS business. We're still showing consistent growth. We're serving over 26,000 individual customer locations, about 40-plus percent of the market. So the system has really, is really gaining a lot of customers. Our sales in the last several months have been substantial. The internet is the key thing, you know, that's what people are really looking for, looking for reliable, high-quality internet. And that's the big thing that we deliver. Our revenues in 2016 were almost $36 million. Just to give you a perspective, our net income so far this year is 4.7 million. And we're looking at having cash available by the end of this year of almost 7.2 million to be able to use for upgrades in the system and expansion. And I'm gonna talk more about expansion in just a minute. Taking the next big steps, we're now gonna be offering the lowest price in America for a gig residential internet. That's $62.95 a month. We were previously offering that at a, at a higher price, $6.9 a month. And now we're lower than anybody else that we can find in the country for providing that service. And it's, it's still, we want to, what we want to do is get more of this rolled out. We're the only ones that have gig all the way across the city. We want to give customers opportunities to enjoy the benefits of that, not just for the internet, but also for all the new things that's happening with internet of things and homes and businesses. By the end of this year, we'll be announcing 10-gig residential internet service. That's huge. There's only one city, I think, in the country that does that now. And we'll, we'll build, we'll be tied with them and several other cities in the world to have the fastest residential internet speed in the world. We're now at a position where it makes business sense. It's not just for bragging rights, although I'll take those as much as I can. But it makes good business sense for us to start moving with a 10-gig system. And I think it's gonna be, you know, customers don't need it specifically today, individual customers, but certain types of customers will be needing as time goes on. And it's, it's a lot like electricity was at the beginning. People just got electricity for a couple of light bulbs in their house. And you took, take a look at all the things that's taken place since that time and why they need more electricity. Same thing is gonna happen with internet and we've got tomorrow available today. We're also looking at expanding our service territory. In the city of Lafayette, you might recall that when we first built the system, it was based on what the city of Lafayette looked like in 2004. Well, since that time, a lot of new developments have taken, taken place in the city of Lafayette. We didn't have enough money with the money we borrowed in 2004 to serve new areas. We just served the areas that was part of the city of Lafayette at that time. And we've asked those customers and those developments just wait until we get, you know, get enough financial power under risk to make that happen. And we are at that point now, as I said, the cash available being 7.2 million. So now we're in a position that we can start serving areas inside the city, annexed areas inside the city, developed, et cetera. And, and I, and other, I guess a clincher on this is beyond. We're looking at, at serving outside the city of Lafayette. And we're going to, so we're gonna have kind of a parallel path of serving areas inside the city. And at the same time, starting to look at places where strategically it makes sense for us to serve outside the city. In the city of Lafayette, we promised to serve all along, all the public streets in the city. city. Outside the city of Lafayette, we'll be looking at those areas that make good financial sense for the, for the, for the system. Uh, so you'll be hearing more about that as we go along, and we're not, we're not announcing any specific areas yet, but we're, we're looking at what makes the best sense, uh, and then we'll move forward with that. And as time goes on, it'll be more exciting use of what was happening with LUS fiber. We, uh, the, the level of positive recognition we've gotten in the country for what we've done has been remarkable and continues to pour in. But the key thing for us is that we've provided something in Lafayette that made a difference in what the community can do as compared to many others. We're the only entity in the state that has this kind of system and one of the, I guess, maybe a couple of dozen in the countries that's, has done what we've done here. So that's the end of my presentation to you. Like I said, I promised it wouldn't take too long. Uh, if there's any questions that you'll have, uh, before we begin, the, the line by line, I'll be happy to respond.
Yes, sir. Actually, a few, a few of us seem to have some things, and, um, I'm gonna start. I just have a couple of things I wanna see if you could speak to. If not, we'll address them once we get into it. Um, I guess I'm gonna go in reverse order. As it relates to communications and the expansion, where are we as it relates to apartment complex and multifamily dwellings, um, in, in getting service and considering services to those types of facilities?
Yeah, apartment complexes are something that's been kind of a, a challenge because the apartment complexes aren't part of public property. They're, they're owned by private entities. And so you have to get into an arrangement with the apartment complex owner to be able to serve in their, in their, uh, complex. Uh, many of those have contracts with other providers to allow services there. Uh, and will require some type of, uh, of dividend on, uh, we'll let you provide services in our apartment complex, but you gotta pay the apartment complex owner something for that. So financially, it makes it not very attractive to do that. If we have any apartment complexes that have, we have several smaller ones that have approached us and we've been able to work with them on that without having to pay them some type of commission. Uh, but if we have some that want to do it, we're, we're happy to speak with them, but it's up to the apartment complex owner to begin with. And then secondly, it has, we have to look at it from a financial perspective too, as to what investment we're gonna make and how that's going to impact us in the long term.
Right. Um, and the only people I've heard from historically were actually, um, residents of apartments. It wasn't owners. And I, I, if I recall correctly, um, our response was the, the cost impact, the cost-effectiveness of doing such a thing because individuals wanted fiber versus other options. But it wasn't just that simple of going to one, you know, sending somebody a signal to one, um, unit within a complex. So just wanted to see where we were as we talk about the expansions and, you know, even talking about expanding possibly beyond city limits and, and trying to address even the new developments that have come on board, um, where, where, you know, that priority then goes and if, if we've gotten there yet, if that's possible. So thank you for that.
So if we have any apartment owners that would like to have fiber there, we'd like to talk to them, you know, and if they can make something make sense, we want to be able to do that. But that has not been the, the case.
Right. Oh, yeah, and I get it. But if you wanna make a commercial right now, you can.
I, I just did.
Um, now I wanna go back to LUS in particular. Um, the betterment agreements that we have had, um, do you, do, is there a budgetary line item that we have to do betterment agreements in particular as it relates to sewer systems or the upgrades to sewer systems?
Well, it's not, I wanna make sure, with the betterment agreements that we have, and yes, there is a line item in our capital budget that deals with that, but betterment for us is that a developer is building a subdivision in some particular location. He needs sewer service or, or water service there. The requirement is that the developer pays a hundred percent of that cost to make that happen, to extend from wherever we are to wherever they need it to be with the right side, with the lines that's there for them. It may be that when we look at it, we say, hey, look, you know, there's some other areas near that development that are going to develop at some point in the future. And it doesn't make any sense to have a developer put in a line that's this big to serve maybe his development only, when ultimately we're gonna need something that's this big to hold the, to take care of the entire area.
Area, right.
So what we do is we say, look, here's what the difference in cost between what you would have needed for your development, Mr. Developer, and what we see coming up in the future. And that's when we pay the betterment. And what this, what the LPU and council has, uh, supported in the past is that we recoup that extra betterment that we pay by the new developer that comes on in. So when he comes in, he doesn't get a free ride in the whole thing, he gets to pay, you know, part of his, that proportionate share.
Right.
So we still have that in places for water and sewer, uh, typically, you know, maybe, uh, maybe it could expand beyond that point, but typically it's water and sewer is, is the big one.
Okay. I just wanted to see, we actually had, uh, something there.
Fifty thousand for each system.
Okay. Fifty, you said?
Fifty for each system.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Five-zero.
Five-zero. Got you. Okay. Um, we recently addressed, um, shortages so we could be more competitive with our linemen, um, especially as it relates to competing with other providers in close proximity and, uh, being able to retain those. And as I was explaining then, um, this should put us in a more competitive position. Is there a correlation to that action in this budget as it relates to, cause I know we was depending heavily on overtime and in some instances contracts because of the shortages. Is there an adjustment in this budget that is proposed that correlates with what this council did as far as meeting that demand?
Well, uh, I, I'm not sure if it means that we reduce con, you know, uh, contract labor, and we use contract labor still regularly for construction projects. On the, on the, uh, employee side, we probably have had to work some extra overtime, but what was really happening is we were starting to get behind on our work. We were starting to get to the, that's what we, we said, we had to get something done because we were getting such a charge of linemen that we were shutting down crews. So we're taking what would, what normally would have been multiple crews, being able to get jobs done in several places and combining them into one. And as a, as a result, our maintenance on our distribution and transmission system was falling behind. So what this is really gonna do is allow us, I mean, we had money in the budget already to fill positions that we weren't filling, so we weren't using any of that money. So now we're in a position that we can take the money that's in the budget that we have now and be able to, to attract. And, and the good news is that we have been able to attract new, new linemen to come work for us. And, and we have, more importantly than that, we, we've eliminated the, the, uh, the number of linemen leaving us as a result of that, which is what our biggest concern was, we're training all these people, and then some other company was getting the benefit of all the training that we have. So this is not an issue where we were looking at reducing our budget as a result, or we were just trying to actually take advantage of the budget that we had because we didn't have adequate, uh, crews to be able to get all the work done in the field.
That was a good answer, Terry. I, I get that, but what I was looking for is that, and, and when we spoke directly and we looked at those numbers, it was to get at full, I guess, full schedule. So are we, is every position filled right now? Is every lineman position filled?
We got Mike here to see if we have all filled or not.
I'm Mike, Boostant Electric Operations Manager. Uh, we, we are in the process of filling them. Uh, I, I guess to, uh, address your concern about the contract services, we did reduce it in this budget, but not totaling because if, we knew it was gonna take time to slowly fill those positions. So it is reduced some, but not totaling.
Okay, so contract services, and, and I'm, I'm curious to see, because, you know, for, for, I, let me say, for me, um, when we say one thing and it's supposed to do something, if it does it, we gotta make the adjustment to maintain that trust because it's been very challenging to convince people we need more. So I just wanna be clear on that. So I'm gonna ask that what that reduction was, but more than contract services, cause I realize under new construction, as Terry just indicated, that that's kind of separate and aside from maintenance and in-house stuff. So how about overtime? Because what I was under the understanding when I ultimately supported that was that by having more people in position is gonna reduce the need from people to work more hours. So is there any adjustment in overtime?
I, I don't think in my budget I have a reduction in overtime. It was more of the, uh, contract services, the, the extra staff that we brought in to, to fill in.
Now, the overtime we have in the budget was not to have people working longer hours to do linemen's work. The money and the, the overtime money we have in that budget is mainly to deal with the, the out-of-light issues that occur outside of working hours, you know, at night and on weekends. That's never, but I mean, I'll say it never gonna change, I guess it's gonna change to some extent, but you're always gonna have the requirement to have overtime because we don't work people twenty-four hours a day. We work them eight hours a day, and if the, if the issue you gotta deal with is something outside of that, we're gonna have to pay overtime for that. But, you know, and I, look, I understand, I, you know, I made a big push to get these linemen taken care of because I could see the erosion taking place that was causing us, gonna cause us more and more problems down the road. And we had, you know, a lot of positions that were open, we're trying to get those filled now. But there's always gonna be a need for overtime, and there's always gonna need, be, be, a need for contractors. What was really happening is the volume of work we were doing before had dropped. We weren't able to get as much done, and therefore we were exposing ourselves to a situation to where if something serious happened, that we didn't have the resources to be able to manage that.
And don't, 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 don't mistake in my questions as if to say I wanna eliminate something, but do understand my position that as, as the people watch us and, and as they ask for this transparency, I have always been and I'm gonna continue to be in a position, I like for it to be on point and accurate, and if the need becomes greater and we ask for it, we could explain it better than saying that there was this leftover. From a budgetary standpoint, and one of the reasons I like to sit in the finance chair and learn so much is that, not necessarily in this department, but I have seen where openings, you know, have in, in, like you have said, it creates an ability to redirect that money in that kind of, again, for a council, at least for me, and, and others may or may not agree. But again, that then takes funds that we don't have quite as much control over that we have to explain. So I get it. I'm not saying that I wanna cut, um, eliminate your contractor services or your overtime. I just wanna see how accurate and close we are, what are our true needs. I like telling people what our real needs are, and then if we need more, go and get more. If, if we, if we, um, balloon it in a, in a sense, it's, it's just so hard today to explain to these taxpayers who absolutely not interested in giving more to say we need more. So when we start looking at, like you say, outages and things like, I know we have twenty-four hour on-call, and that's where overtime is used, when it, late at night, something happens, you got some people waiting and ready to go, but that's in an overtime capacity. So I, I would never look to eliminate it. That wasn't the point of my question. The point is, we've made a move. We've given more somewhere so that we could do something different, not eliminate contractor services, not eliminate overtime. But like you say, you push really hard, you get a good job, you convince us you got it. But if, if that happening, there's no correlating action on the other side, then that makes me say, well, wait, we have this increase, but nothing else, the, the other demand, nothing changed. When I was under the impression that there would be, the need lowers, it don't go away, but we don't need as much. That's how I'm looking at it. If I'm looking at it wrong, I stand to be corrected. But that's what I was looking for, is that if we get fully staffed, fully manpower, that is gonna eliminate something. That's how I bought it. That's how it was sold to me. And that's why I approved it and I was with it, is because, and we had a long conversation, and, and like you're saying, retention. We didn't wanna lose people. So it was about not losing people, but by having full staff, we don't have to do these other things as much, so.
Yeah, I have a chance from time to time to meet some of the people in my position with other utility companies, just because we're in the same kind of business.
Right.
And they have joked with me that they're disappointed that, you know, now they can't get all of their linemen from us.
Yeah. They gotta train their own people now, huh?
And, look, it's, it's, so for us, it was an issue of, um, this was not a money-saving thing for us. It was a matter of, it, those are the resources we need. We weren't able to keep them, we weren't able to fill them, and so we had to do something or otherwise reliability on the system was going to drop because we can't, we couldn't do anymore of what we, what we had, you know, without, we can put people in overtime, but you gotta be really, really careful with that kind of strenuous work to do that.
And I, I, look, I get it, I respect that, I understand it. I'm gonna just add for us, well, let me say for me, cause I don't wanna start speaking like another member who make it seem like he talked to everybody before he talked. For me, no, you're not here today. For me, I like the ability to tell the constituent, the complainer, or even the good taxpayer, look, when I was able to save you, I save you. When I needed to ask you for more, I need more. So that's, that's where I'm at. I'm, I'll agree with what you're saying, I get it. But for me, I like to be able to show them that I'm not afraid to cut back when we can because I'm certainly not afraid to ask for when we need. So that's kind of where I'm at. So, so we have a reduction in contractor service, overtime have remained the same. And my last question before I go to the next member is, um, the cashiers. Do we have an idea outside of any across-the-board increases? Have the cashiers at our collections, can you share with me the last time that they have had any increases?
We got Antonio.
And again, that's outside.
That.
Of course, that has to fall underneath the new guy. He, he's still, he's still mastering it.
Good afternoon. Antonio Connor, Customer and Support Services Manager. Uh, the last time that our cashiers received, uh, an across-the-board pay increase was, we did the market, uh...
Not, not across the board.
Okay.
Not when everybody got some, I'm talking about just specifically for, for them. Not like if we did a two percent is what, not, not be across the board. Have they ever received anything as a standalone in, in their, say, in their industry is what I'm asking.
They have, or they in some, any kind of apprenticeship sort of thing where they... Okay. Okay. All right, so we have some areas like, uh, in our, um, water and wastewater where we have set forth some, uh, some levels of, as an employee continues to get better, then to get to know the business, what they're doing, that we have made some adjustments, it's kind of apprenticeship type of training. We wanna do something like in customer service, we don't have that approved by civil service yet, but it's something we've been talking about, so I was kind of hesitant because I couldn't remember what we were with it.
Absolutely.
So the answer that Antonio was giving is it, is that basically those employees in customer services, the last raise they receive is the same across-the-board raise that the other employees received.
Okay. Um, finance, I just wanna make sure my calculations are correct. I just simply took the line item and divided it by the number of cashiers, which I think is seven. Could you look at that for me right quick and tell me if the cashiers is making, um, a little over twenty-two thousand a year is what that amount to? Is that right? I think there's seven of them. And that was just cashiers, that didn't include supervisors or anything like that.
So when you say cashiers, you're not including customer service representatives?
Are they one in the same?
Well, no, it's two, two different things.
Two different, that's what I thought.
Okay, so cashier will just wait at, Lisa, once you come over, I'm gonna have this right. Then the cashier is confused, the ones at the, at the desk.
At the window?
At the window.
Okay.
But we have other customer service representatives that deal with the customers that call in about, you know, high bill, wanted to apply for new service, you know, all those kinds of activities.
Right, right. I was mainly referring to the ones at the window, but I...
I'm Lisa Schasson, the Customer and Meter Services Administrator. Um, within customer service, we have cashiers, we have customer service rep ones, customer service rep twos, and fiber customer service reps. They are each at a different pay scale.
Right. And...
And the cashier is simply, all they do is take payments.
Right.
The customer service rep ones and twos answer phones and wait on walk-in traffic. And the fiber cashier, uh, fiber customer service reps do the same. They answer phones and, and wait on walk-in customers.
So you got cashiers and customer service ones and twos?
Yes, sir.
And would the customer service ones and twos, they kinda, what we just spoke about as far as the cashiers, they is kind of waiting on an apprenticeship program, but they, that division, that grouping hasn't had any increases outside of those that have been across the board?
Correct. The cashiers, the cashier, the order in which they get paid, the customer service rep ones get paid less than the cashiers. And then the customer service rep twos get paid more than the cashiers. So it's like customer service rep one, cashier, customer service rep two, fiber customer service rep. What we're looking at doing is training them across the board over all of the systems, and anyone can work for either section and do any job.
And you're going to, so they, they would kind of then fall into one block where, kind of like we're doing with how we inspect.
As they complete one level successfully, they would move to the next level. That's how we're trying to design it.
What's your timelines on that, Lisa?
Um, we're hoping for.
December.
December to have a timeline put together with the expense of it and the breakdown of the different levels and what's going to be the requirements to meet the next level.
Okay.
And of course, that would have to require, you know, civil service and administration approval before we really come to you on that, but.
Right.
It's something we've been working on, we've talked about for some time, and especially with the advent of fiber, you know, fiber's a competitive business and so you're trying to attract customers to say yes to buying your service, it's a little differently utility side that they need to buy our service. And what we, so what we want to try and do is raise everybody to that level, then you have a lot more flexibility on how you can use your staff and chances are not have to have as much staff down the road, you know, once you have all of that at that particular point. But the whole idea is to get the sophistication of, of the whole group to rate, to increase and try and keep them on because that's another place where we have some turnover. Now, good news that we typically can fill those positions fairly easily, but you're filling them with people that don't know that, that business. And we can train them, it's not, that, that require the counter training you need for alignment per se, but it, it does require some time to do it, so get more stability there, it's a better thing for our organization as a whole too.
Okay, um, so let, let me do this, um, and this is a request for information for finance, just provide to me the areas that Lisa identified, the fiber customer service, customer service twos, customer service ones, and cashiers, just show me what an individual in each one of those would make so I could see that to look at after this time. Okay, thank you, Lisa, appreciate it. And Moss Street LUS Fiber Service Center, there are no public restrooms there, is that correct? That's accurate, right? The, the restrooms are for employees only?
The, the, that's how it's designed, we're leasing that space through Mid-South Bank and based on the way that they, I guess the rules of development were is that they saw where we did need to have a public restroom there, we have.
They saw where they, we didn't or we did?
They did not include a public restroom there, but we have made, we have taken one of the restrooms and made it into a public restroom.
Now, who, who saw that they didn't need that?
Pardon me?
Mid-South Bank?
Mid-South Bank owns that property, right, we're leasing it from them.
And they said that we didn't need public restrooms?
When they looked, when they looked at the, at the regs that were there, they, their determination is that there was not a public restroom necessary because of the size of the, of the space. And, but after we've looked at it, because we had some requests from customers about that, and so very shortly after that, we opened up one of the restrooms to be able to be used for public restrooms, is barely used, but we set one up for that. And we're working with Mid-South Bank to get another, for them to install another public restroom for our employees.
And they have done that?
Have not done that yet.
So we working on that?
We're working on that, but.
And they're taking on that cost?
We've solved the problem with the public, we just need to solve the problem internally.
Okay. I bet they got restrooms at every Mid-South Bank.
Well, I don't know about that.
For the public. That's, that's, that's interesting, that's a new take. So, so they're going to be responsible for the build out of an additional restroom for the purpose of the employees?
We're having discussions with them, that's our position. And it's, it's going to be rectified, but the bottom line is that we got, we have a, we have a restroom for the employees, we have a restroom for the public.
And that's direct access?
Yes.
It's not through needing permission? Because I'm, I've heard some things.
Need permission.
Like you got to ask to access the restroom?
Lisa.
Okay, the restroom is behind a secure door. If a customer asks to use the restroom, we escort them to the restroom. It's a, where the restroom is located is a very secure area.
Oh, yeah, I can even understand we could make a lot of money there.
So the security guard escorts them and waits for them and escorts them out until the reconstruction can be done to rectify it. But we have made it accessible if they ask.
Okay. Let's expedite this, please, I know there's been some changes at Mid-South Bank, but, I don't, I don't need to say anymore, we know, we know the situation.
Let me make it clear, I'm very unhappy about this.
Yeah.
Okay, and from our position, Mid-South Bank has to produce. And if something happens, I'll see that they're not, I'll become to this council, let you know what's the next steps.
All right.
But we, this is a question I was asked them to begin with, you know, at what, it was their responsibility to build according to city codes?
Right.
You know, they didn't, and so our position is going to be that they have to fix it.
I wish I'd have known that we could have fixed that. But, but okay, we're going to wait, but if we could, let's just get them hopping. So like you say, so we could know if they say no, you need to let us know.
That's right.
Because we could take some other measures, but yeah, but we need to be able to go to the restroom. Sometimes we might not have time to ask, you know, or wait for the escort.
Yep.
Because I know we collecting a lot of money, I took a picture and the cars was like on Moss Street, you know, it's a beautiful thing being over there, what a wonderful idea.
We can have another discussion on that, but it's, it's, it's good for us to be in that, that, that part of community, I think has been a very positive thing, it's the transition there has not been the easiest because some folks didn't want to see this, this place be shut down and we've made accommodations so they can at least, you know, drop off an envelope and we'll, we'll pick it up every day and make sure we got all the payments in. But, you know, a lot of other utility companies don't even have a customer service location at all, but our position is that we're not like the other utility companies, we want to have that. And we want to make sure that it's something that's comfortable for our employees and our customers to be able to operate within.
All right, thank you, Terry.
I'm glad we had this discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, sir. Couple of things, you can give us credit every now and then for the site. It's, it's okay to say, yeah, yeah, it was a good idea that you guys had to have this site on this.
I'm sorry, I thought I was understood to begin with.
Okay, you can't do that, it doesn't hurt, I don't think.
Let me, let me make it clear, it was y'all that came up with the idea of the site and y'all had pushed me to do it because I really wasn't that.
Should have, should have to push hard though, but we.
The thing that worked for us, for me, is, is that I was always concerned about the level of traffic and lack of parking that we had here. And we knew we had to do something different as a matter of, was that the place to go at the time, but you know, it was an opportunity and that was a good thing, so thank you to the council and to LPUA for suggesting the idea.
Can you, can you put that in the, in the records that he did say that?
I think you look at the previous specific.
Okay, well, if they start getting real specific about that, that could be really rough, but, you see, because a lot I came from the previous administration too, but.
Huh? All right, now, don't get me started, we, we just starting your budget, okay? Let's not, let's not go there.
Just lay out the facts.
All right.
But, but, but y'all were there, so.
The first time I was told no.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But we're here for a budget here.
Okay. Man, I just broke the point of my pencil, you're lucky. Uh, we, you spoke earlier about the, the fiber, you know, eventually once you got all the city, the new subdivisions online, that you're going to go out or consider going out. Uh, did, did, y'all didn't put any type of timeframe on, on going out in certain directions yet or?
No, no, we haven't telegraphed that yet, there's a lot of reasons why we wouldn't do that.
No, I'm, I'm fine, I don't want to telegraph, I just making sure.
What we're going to be looking for is going to be where it makes the most sense to do it. I'm, we're going to do this from a standpoint of what, what would a business do if it was expanding outside than its areas? You would try to serve the areas where you're going to have the best return on your investment and that's the approach I would take.
Okay, because I know there's a lot of, a lot of demand, I know in the area that I represent, close to the city, that would, that would love to get a hold of this, so I would really hope you guys move a little quicker than normal.
Yeah, and, look, I understand you, what you hear, what you hear, but there's, sometimes you end up with four or five people that are excited about something and it make it sound like everybody's excited about something. And I want to be sure that when we make that investment, that we don't satisfy four or five people with an invest, with an investment also serve 150 people.
I'm going to sound like Mr. Terry right now, I talked to a thousand people. Okay? Talked to a lot of people and they, and they're really interested in it, just to let you know.
Well, you know, that's a good thing, you know, if we want, if we have people wanting the, the service, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do to accelerate that and, but first thing we want to do is be careful, every step we've taken with this fiber system has been one to, to be measured on how we've done things, we had to go through it, you guys know a lot, a lot to get to where we are now, so I don't want to squander that now, but I do want to, I, I do think it's, we're in a good position to begin expanding and any input that any of you have, we, we certainly want to consider that.
Okay, well, I'll get my thousand people and send you an email. Thank you, sir. See you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Con?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, an observation and then a couple of questions. I noted that the in lieu of tax revenue to the general fund for the City of Lafayette has increased over almost a million dollars.
It's the current estimate, yes, sir.
And then the imputed tax from the communication system, is it projected to be 600,000?
Are you, I'm sorry, I, I'm looking at the utilities pro forma, you're looking at the general fund?
I'm jumping ahead to the imputed tax for the communication system.
The imputed tax is estimated to be 1.1. You might remember that, that is a step increase each year, the amount has been increasing where it's going between, right now it's going between LUS Fund 502 and the City General Fund and it's gradually migrating to the City General Fund.
So cumulatively, how much are we getting in ILOT and imputed tax?
1.1 million.
Overall, okay, good. Thank you. Terry, on the ability to get one gig, what was the price on that? On the communication side?
Sixty-two, sixty-two thousand nine five cents per month.
And currently, what are we charging for 50 megs, or megabits? Is it the $47 range? I'm just curious, it seems like you can heck, heck a lot more bandwidth, but not effectively doubling the price.
Right.
William Ness, Communications Support Services Administrator. We have a number of promotions and things like that, but our, you can get 60 megs, we no longer offer 50, for as low as 29.95 if you buy television service.
Okay. Well, we'll have you up here, William, on the, what are we doing on peer-to-peer?
We still offer one gigabit per second, peer-to-peer.
And that's part of the basic, if you're just getting the 50 megabits?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And then, Terry, on the plans for replacing Bonham, I noticed this year you have almost 27 million in the proposed budget and then the following year a little bit over 93. What's our status on the plans for replacing Bonham?
Well, the first thing we're going to do is to begin removing some of the facilities out there, so we've got to take down the, the oil tanks, for example, are amongst the first things that we're going to be dealing with, the old, oil tanks have been there for, since the 60s and haven't been used in probably 25 years, just, we didn't want to spend the cost and pass to take it down, but now is a good time for us to tear those down, start preparing the property for the next steps and, which would include tearing down the Bonham plant itself. Then we'll be having to come to LPUA and council at the right time for us to get the authorization to issue tax exempt bonds to be able to build the new units. And the units are going to be just reciprocating units, smaller, much smaller units, nothing large like what we have in the, at the, at the Bonham plant. And, and you can do those on a modular basis, so we can build those as necessary to meet the overall needs of the utility system, which, which a big part of that is to make sure we have adequate capacity to meet the capacity requirements of MISO. Because we can buy power from MISO, but to, to play in that game, you've got to have your own generation capacity to, as things stand today, what we're doing, we're buying that capacity from someone else, we're paying someone to provide a capacity for us because there's a glut of capacity on the market, that's not always going to be that way. And so the idea is, is that the right, I don't know, from a timing perspective, begin building these new units at the, at the Bonham plant, but first steps are going to be to start, start that, removing the unnecessary facilities that we have in our property.
What are the long-range plans for not being as dependent on the Boyce plant for the coal generation plant? Are we going to reduce the need?
It, it's all based on, the, the biggest driver for us is cost. I want to be sure that when I come to you to make that decision to not operate the, the coal plant, which, remember, that's a plant that's owned by three entities, all of us have to agree on how to, how to handle that between CLECO and LIPA and us, that I'm not doing it at the expense of having to make major rate increases to our customers. And so what we want to do is, what's, the good news is that renewable energy sources, the prices are dropping, but got to always remember renewable energy sources don't operate around the clock. And so you've got to have adequate capacity to be able to handle the, the various seasons of the year and going, and operating around the clock. So it's very possible that we're going to be either investing in renewables or contracting with some entity that can invest in renewables and have customers participate in it, there's different models that we're looking at in that regard, you know, you can, you have some places where, where people in the community say, we're willing to put up $3,000 or $4,000 or $5,000 to buy a share of, of the, of a, of a solar facility. And if you have enough people willing to do that, with the economics that doesn't make that happen, then, you know, you may have something that can work and what those folks get the benefit of it besides feeling good about the fact they're using renewable ser, power, is that they also get a return on that investment by the amount of power that's being generated from that solar unit, so they got to own a share of it or, or leasing a share of it, then they can get some benefit of that. There's a lot of different ways that we've seen others do this and we're getting, we're, you know, working with several entities now to get more of an education and see what can make sense for us. The worst thing we have going for us is one of the best things we have going for us and that is our rates are low. Okay, so in other parts of the country, we get the comment all the time, well, why is this city going with more renewables more quickly than you are, why is this city? Well, it's because the utility rates are high. So the economics of bringing in renewable into a situation where rates are already high becomes a lot more attractive than when rates are low and you're trying to bring in renewables that could actually increase the rates to our customers. Our sensitivity is to not do something that has an impact on our customers that's going to increase their rates because, just because we went to renewables.
Well, when it comes to dependency on fossil fuels, specifically rotor maker at Boyce, because of the MISO agreement, we have cut down our capacity that's being generated there, correct?
Yeah, I think we're probably less than half, less than half of what we used to use it for. And really, we're operating at the lowest level generally that we can, because we want to keep those, again, this whole thing about having capacity, that capacity level is required by the MISO market is very important. Without that, you pay a huge, huge premium for buying power on the MISO market, so we want to own, continue to own that capacity. And to make that work, you got to have the unit, coal plant, you can't just bring it up and shut it down. The idea is you keep that thing running as long as it can run, you take it down for measured maintenance when you have to get it done, you, you have a real tight timeframe to get that happening. So what we do is operate the coal plant at the lowest level as we can so that we meet the capacity requirements on MISO, so we take in the power out of the coal plant ourselves as a result of that. That's an extra cost to us because we could get power cheaper on the MISO market, but it's a trade-off. If we shut down the coal plant to take full advantage of the MISO market, then we're going to put ourselves in a position of having potentially pay substantially more for the capacity elsewhere. And once you shut down a coal plant for some period of time, the idea of bringing it back up again could be very, very, very problematic. So to all three partners, CLECO, LIPA, and LUS or LPPA have all agreed that keeping the unit running at the minimum levels necessary to keep it operating, picking it up as necessary, because there's sometimes in the market where, where the builder make a unit actually is a, is an attractive deal on the market, we can sell power and we can make money out of that. So we, we do it as we can, but still keep it at that, at that level that, that, that keeps that capacity arrangement for us. That's a very, you know, think about that plant is a 200, our share of is 246 megawatts, so that's 246 megawatts of capacity that we have, that if we shut that plant down, we have to buy 246 megawatts of capacity from somewhere else, that's where the, the premium cost could be. So it's a balancing, it's a balancing, and you can't, we can't, we have to really be careful to make sure we're, we're guarded and operated in a more conservative perspective as a result of that.
Then one last question on that particular subject, the improvement of our electrical grid system over the last five or six years, has really worked to our benefit?
Oh, substantially, substantially. But, but the MISO change was the biggest benefit, but just for those council members that weren't here, some of you were, but you know, back in, in 2007, 2008, we had a nightmare to deal with on the transmission grid in this part of the state. We were very close to having major blackouts in this part of the state, in fact, on one cold December night. In fact, on one cold December night, we had a blackout in this part of the state. Uh, our customers in the city of Lafayette had blackouts when the temperature was twenty-eight degrees outside. Uh, we, we did them as rolling blackouts, so every half hour, we, we shut down one part of the city, and then we shut down another part, the next half hour, bring that first one back up, and just kind of cascaded along to make it through that. Uh, and so it was, uh, that, the investments that were made in the transmission grid, uh, provided us a lot more protection going forward. It was an investment that Lafayette spent about seventeen, eighteen million dollars on, the overall project was, I think, about a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty million dollars. Antigen, CLECO was the other major participants in it, because it was a grid in entire area, not just in Lafayette. Uh, but having that grid upgrade and ha, and then joining MISO, which, once we joined MISO, our, uh, our headaches with grid issues became very minimal, because with, in the, in the MISO, um, governance of how things operate, it, it looks like, I, I kind of say it kind of miraculously got better, uh, compared to where we were before, where there was one investor on utilities that was kind of running the grid, probably more so than they should have been, in my opinion. Uh, I'm sure they probably take fault, take exception to that, but that's what, the reality of it all, and when we went to MISO, we never had another threat of a blackout since that time, whereas prior to joining the MISO, just days before, we had those kind of threats.
One last question regarding our contract, our acquisitions contract with Slimco, that has expired or is expiring?
It's going to expire in two thousand and nineteen. It was a fifteen-year contract that we put in place in the fall of two thousand and four, so it'll be in two thousand and fifteen. And, uh, and so we're looking at what the options are beyond that point.
But the last component of that contract was our takeover, uh, not takeover, our acquiring Youngsville area? Or are there some additional acquisitions coming in?
No, no, what, what happened is the, the Slimco contract provided for an area of influence, uh, line. So it was an area that was negotiated between LUS and Slimco as the areas that we wanted, that we wanted to have, where we could maybe serve new customers if we chose to in those areas. And at the time that we negotiated that, all the areas that we, that were included in that area of influence were all rural, uh, or in the city of Lafayette. So it was either in the city of Lafayette or it was rural, there was no cities there. In the meantime, over the past fifteen years, there's been a lot of annexation that's taken place, especially with Broussard and Youngsville. And as a result, we'd end up with some of those areas of influence falling in to Broussard and Youngsville. And so we're able to negotiate a franchise agreement, because you have to, if you're going to serve inside of municipality, you have to have the rights to use their rights of way to run your lines and so forth. And so we negotiated a, um, a franchise agreement with both of those, which the LPU and council approved, that allows us to serve, uh, in those municipalities. And so, and while the purpose of the franchises were to serve the areas of influence, actually the franchises, because they're, generally by the municipalities, actually provided we could serve more than that, if we ever, if the, if the conditions were right to do so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Terry, uh, earlier in your presentations, talk about one gig, that's what we have now for fiber, and you said now we possibly going to ten gigs, correct?
Right.
Now, will the customer have a choice between one gig, one and ten, or be either one or ten?
No, they're going to have a choice in, or everything. So they're right now, we can, if customers want to buy three megabits per second, we still serve that product today, you know, and then the next tier, I think, is somewhere around fifty or sixty. But the idea is to, is to have that additional capacity there for those residences that, that see the need for having it. It's not something that people are going to use today, but, you know, ten years ago, people weren't using a hundred mgs either. You know, as time goes on, it can be more and more demand for that. And one of the powerful things about the fiber system is that to make those upgrades is really a small incremental cost. We don't have to start putting in new fiber or anything, we just have to put in different electronics.
Okay. A question about, um, employees or salary, wages, whatever you want to define it as. As for, when it comes to promotion, how are employees promoted from, in the department? Is it experience, they have to take a test, or how does that work?
Well, you know, all, all the employees at LUS, except me, are under civil service.